Good evening. Thank you very much for having me here. So my name is Tanya Barrett. As, thank you, Mrs. Dr. River for introducing me. Just wanted to share a little bit about myself. I am a nationally certified school climate coach. What's that mean? That means for two years when I started at IU 12, actually, I was put through a training program where I worked with a national school climate, the National School Climate Center, and was guided by a coach to work with a very specific team. And then after that process, was awarded the certification at a Level 1. I needed to continue that work and submit a case study in order to be approved as a Level 2 coach. So that's where I sit right now. That's only one of the hats that I wear. I'm the Training and Consultation Supervisor, and I work with schools in school improvement in academic and behavioral areas. And I'm also a certified data-wise consultant out of Harvard Educational, the educational system. I'm not a Harvard graduate, but they have a subsidiary, Kuro Strategy School, that supports our understanding of data. So I spend a lot of time working with numbers and data. All right. So the first thing we wanted to do was introduce you to our School Climate Committee.
So one of the first things that we did was we formed a team. So the team consists of teachers. It also includes support staff. So obviously, Tanya is the facilitator of this group. I sit on it. Dr. Sterners sits on it. Dr. Bell sat on it prior to moving to the middle school. Ms. Smith sits on it as an assistant principal. We include Mrs. Landis, our school nurse. We include her because A, she sees kids in a different environment. She also is the head of our, kind of our data keeper for all of our student assistance program information. So she gets to see a wide range of students and sees a lot of data that is very useful to be able to report. We included Mrs. Coons, one of our school counselors. Mrs. Sam Witty, who is one of our counseling clerks. She gets to see a lot of kids that come in. She interacts with a lot of kids. She gives a different perspective as to what she sees. Mr. Newland sits on it, as well as a teacher representative. And then we have six students that represent a wide variety of students. So students who are in athletics, students who represent various different genders, various different races, different course levels. So we looked at trying to take a look at those six to best represent a large conglomerate of students that we have. So that's our team, and it's a good team. They like to collaborate, and they've come up with some really good things so far.
So the process is pretty circular in that it always starts with kind of establishing the committee, which you were introduced to already. And then stage two is to look at data. So tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the data that we collected. And then stage three is understanding the data. So that was a multi-step process. We are still in the stage three because that's where we turn that data around to an actionable plan. So that's the spot that we're at. The next, once the plan is done, we're going to implement the plan and monitor it so that we can adjust as necessary. So it's pretty basic in terms of how we're looking at this process. My justification is a little off there. Stakeholder engagement through perceptual data. So what does that mean? The survey itself collects perceptual data, which is one of the four types of data that Victoria Barnhart recommends that we use when looking at any system in a school. And perceptual data is what the students, staff, families, and community partners believe. That's where we start. When we pose questions, how do they feel based on their lived experiences that they see the environment? That doesn't mean we stop with perceptual data. We also look at student performance data, demographic data, and the last one just escaped me for a second. I'll come back to it. I'll let you know. There's four of them. So with this particular survey, which is around perceptual data, we wanted to set goals for responses. This is a scientifically validated survey, which means that there are certain standardized procedures that we should use in order to increase response. And we can feel really confident the higher levels of response rates that we have. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mullen, who will share with you our goals and actuals.
So last spring, we got together, and the goals are set. Those are by the test itself and what is statistically going to give us the most significant and best data that we can get. We hit our, almost hit our goal in staff. Again, it was an optional test. We did hit our goal and exceeded our goal with families. With students, we did not hit our goal. Again, it's optional. We didn't force students to take it. They had the ability to say no in the spring. And let's face it, in the spring, students start to get tired. They start to, you know, a lot of testing goes on. So certainly, you know, we give them the opportunity. We gave them the opportunity to do it in class. We gave them the opportunity to have the link that they could take it at home. We sent emails to students. We sent emails to families as well to have all of that. We had it on our website. We gave our faculty time to do it during a faculty meeting. We sent an email out to all of our staff. That includes support staff, so ladies and gentlemen in our cafeteria. That includes our custodial staff, our secretarial staff, as well as our teaching staff. And then again, our students, we made announcements asking them. The one piece about the data, while we didn't touch or hit what we wanted for, necessarily for our students, we did get a good diverse number of students when you take a look at breaking it down by different groups. We were very happy that the fact that those students that did go ahead and complete the survey, it does really represent our percentages that, you know, within our building and our various areas. So we feel pretty good that that information that we got is accurate, and we're going to look to send it back out again in the spring this year.
Thank you. In the digital link, if you want to look at it, there is a link to the survey. So if anybody wants to see what the questions are, they are available to look at. And I did think of that fourth type of data, its process, how we make decisions and what we do organizationally. So let's talk about the survey itself. The data, when the questions are asked, the answers are aligned to three different buckets. The first bucket is social-emotional learning. So those are questions related to emotional regulation, how students interact with their peers, their feeling of empathy and understanding others and seeing other perspectives, and then connectedness. The second bucket is student support. And while there's always going to be student support for social-emotional needs, this bucket actually really focuses on academic support and learning tasks and career planning, and how challenged do students feel and how supported are they in those challenges? The last one is school safety. So this is really around physical safety, emotional safety, how are we resolving conflicts, and how safe do students feel inside the school and then outside of the school? So here, I'm giving you just a little bit of a perspective. This was the results of the survey from 2021, and this is the district look. And what I want to share with you, first of all, at the top, and I think this, at the top, you're going to see a red, black, and green box. And that aligns to the score distribution. Every question has four possible answers, from strongly unfavorable to strongly favorable. Every student who takes the survey and answers, that number is recorded. And what you see here is the average of all the student responses, staff responses, and parent responses. So at the top, we have the total average. Whoops, in 2021, the total average for the staff was 3.22. If you look up at the top, 3.22 falls in the neutral zone. What that could mean is that either everyone pretty much gave it a 2 or a 3, or it could mean that there might be some outliers, right? So we need to dig in a little deeper to try and determine, is there something we should know about that score? Now, if we see an unfavorable, we can feel pretty confident that there were a lot of scores that were strongly or somewhat unfavorable. So we would say a 1 or a 2. And if we see a favorable, then we're going to see a lot of scores that are at the 4 level. Obviously, it's, you know, it's out of 4 points. So you can see the distribution from 2021. And what makes this more meaningful is when we look at the relationship of 2021 in the district to 2022. And so what I did was I laid over the new averages for the district. And overall, what you are seeing is a decrease in the overall average and then each of the buckets. Now, you might be asking, Tanya, why aren't there, why isn't there any information in the social-emotional learning, student support, school safety for parents, and nothing in community? That's a district decision in terms of community. Community is not sending out to the community at large. Community is sending it to community partners who have an understanding of the day-to-day going on in the school. So a community partner might be a substitute teacher. It might be a contracted service provider. It might be a DARE representative, or a police officer, a school resource officer. This is not a, an out to the entire community because the questions being asked are about what are they actually seeing inside the buildings? The parent survey, what they have found over the years is that the responses by parent and family are not statistically significantly different from student responses. Think about it. Where, what is the main source for an adult, for the student, what is their main source of information about how things are going in school? It's the student. So what we're seeing is a lot of compare, a lot of very comparable scores between the students and families. So they actually revamped the survey, and the questions for parents are not really around that intense or intimate day-to-day kind of going on in the school. It's more of a holistic perception of what does the environment feel like when they're working with the school district, whether they're physically in there or having interactions with the school. So how does this relate to Sesquahannock High School? So here is our 2021 data, and you can see in 2021, we actually had two scores in the social-emotional learning that were much lower than the rest of the scores. Now, they didn't quite reach the unfavorable, but if we look at them in comparison to the 2022, we actually see an increased decrease, if you will. So we're seeing that scores overall in all of the areas are going down. Now, I want to tell you that I work with over 37 school buildings in York, Adams, and Franklin County. I have had the opportunity to do this kind of work with lots of schools. And what I want to let you know is that the results overall are not a lot different than in other high schools where I've worked. What you want to look at is how does this relate to the statewide average? And actually, here's the statewide average. Here's how we're going to take a look at this. I'll come back to the other one in a second. So the state average is on the left, and then the Sesquahannock High School's average is next. So the state total average, 2.85. Sesquahannock High School, 2.89. State, 2.62. Student in Sesquahannock High School, 2.61. When you look at the comparison to the state, you're noticing that it is not as much of a decrease when you look at it holistically across the state. There are still some areas, though, that we want to highlight and work on. And specifically, the area that is of most concern to the committee is that social-emotional learning. Because of all of the areas, that was the biggest drop, and that is the one that is statistically more unfavorable. So the survey was done, and then on April 21st, we convened the committee for the first time. We brought everybody in, and we spent the entire day poring over the data. That process, Dr. Mullen was there for the entire, the entire data analysis. There was a lot of really good conversation among the adults on the committee. At this point, we didn't have the students in, in the analysis. As a result of just looking at data, we identified these three areas as the highest areas of concern. One, student self-efficacy and integrity. Where, how do the students perceive themselves? Two, conflict resolution and peer relationships. Students not feeling like their interactions were as positive as they could be. And then number three, connectedness and involvement. So that feeling of being part of the school community and involved in the community, or in the school community activities. From there, we then pulled in some listening sessions because the committee felt like the survey could only take us so far, and we needed to delve in and hear some other voices, right? The questions are prescribed, and so what we wanted to know was a little more information. So we offered, Dr. Mullen sent out an invitation to families, students, and staff to join in listening sessions. We held three family listening sessions, two staff, and two student listening sessions. And during that time, we asked them all the same questions, six questions, and we scribed "ever response." And then we used that information and conducted a summary that we provided to Dr. Mullen, a pared-down, using a qualified, or qualitative analysis. We were able to pare down the listening session information to three themes that kind of ran through all of the conversation. One was a concern around representation and inclusion of students from diverse backgrounds. One was better communication, and one was the mental health of staff and students. Now, when you look at the response rates in the data, and you look at the response rates in the listening sessions, we're talking about over 1,000 people responding to the survey and less than 20 people responding to the listening sessions. So sometimes when you have people in a listening session, you get better data, but it's not the quantity. When you're in a survey, you get some more incomplete data, but you have a little more confidence in the fact because of the sheer numbers. So we took those six areas and said, okay, we're going to work with all six. We're going to, we're going to continue this work to figure out where our priorities going to be. Now, you'll notice I starred better communication. Better communication was all over the board. And if I sit back and I look at those six pieces, that's actually a strategy. It's not an area, right? It was better communication between parents and administrators. It was communication between staff and students. It was communication between families and students. It was all over the board. But what would they be communicating about? The other five strategies, right? One way in which we looked at this and thought, how can we continue to make sure all voices are heard, was to bring in more students from a diverse background to have the conversation. So the rest of the committee that Dr. Mullen talked about joined us at the start of this school year.
So based on the data that we got from this survey, as well as speaking to staff and listening to parents as well, one of the things that we jumped on, and Dr. Bell and Dr. Sterner did a lot of the work on this over the summer. As you know, the district as a whole has adopted the HRS model, Marzano's High Reliability Schools. So one of the things we did is we started to attack that as a building during the summer in an effort to start things off on a positive note for the school year. So we created our Warrior Expectations, the idea of safety, being respectful, being responsible, and being resilient, which we, and Carolyn and our other students will tell you, they hear every day after the Pledge of Allegiance, these are the expectations. We tell them that every day. We sat down with teachers when they came back, and we created a suggested, like, behavioral response flow chart. If a student does this, here's the steps that you take. And we made it very clear with the teachers. The teachers, in turn, you know, communicated their expectations and how things would work with students on the first day. Those students, after looking at data, those students who hit certain benchmarks were immediately put on student contracts in August prior to coming back to school with the expectations of what they needed and what privileges could potentially be taken away from them if they didn't meet them. We created a Warrior Promise where the kids, you know, after hearing the handbook talks in August, and then they're getting a reiteration of that from Ms. Smith and myself this week and early next week, we talked to them about they pledged that they would be respectful to one another, they would be responsible and resilient, and that they would help maintain the safety of our building and our learning environment. We also extended teacher supervision. We took a complete look at that. We have teachers that are at bathrooms just about every period. I mean, obviously, if a student's in need or needs help, sometimes a teacher might be late, but we have them there from the morning, including the end of the day. We also, as part of the HRS system, have a group of 15 teachers that go out and do Quick Data every month. And just to give you a little bit of data of these things that we've put in place thus far, like the behavioral management, the setting the expectations, last year, on the second Friday of January, we had 772 referrals, student referrals for discipline. This year, at the exact same time, the second Friday of the month in January, we're at 432. And then when you take a look at the Quick Data, that the teachers are going out and randomly asking students, and each teacher is, of those 15 are required to go find five teachers and three staff members randomly. In December, because we're still, we're just now starting to work on January data, but of the students that were surveyed in December, 93% of those surveyed said that they felt safe within the building, which is, is a nice number. Obviously, we would love to be 100%, but 93 is a step in the right direction. 82% of them said they felt respected by their peers, which I think is a good number. Obviously, there's room to work. 96% of them felt respected by the instructional staff, and 98% of the students said they felt supported by the support staff. So we do have some data to start, and we continue to collect that. We've adjusted those particular data points. In November, we made some tweaks to our Quick Data. When we started to take a look at the respected piece, we started to break it down, well, who, who do you not feel respected by? Is it your peers? Is it the teachers? Is it the support staff? So we started to really kind of hone in, and part of that data then is being used with this group to start to figure out what we can do to continue to improve those numbers. They're not 100%. That's obviously our goal, but it is a step in the right direction.
So that brings us to this year. The first time we met with the students was November 3rd. We, we want to honor the students. They're giving up their flex time to come and meet with us for 90-minute periods, and they've met three times now with us. And we kind of unpacked this process with them. We shared with them the data and all of the steps so far, and said, we've got six potential areas to work, actually five, if you don't count communications. So we shared all of those, again, with them, right? The representation, communication, connectedness, and then the mental health, student self-efficacy, integrity, and conflict resolution. And these were the three that rose to the top for the students, with mental health of staff and students being the number one. And here's what I will share. When you say the word mental health, there's lots of different definitions. And so while the first meeting was really to unpack which direction did they want to go, and what did we want, what was the name of it, at this point, listening to the conversation of the students, they may call it mental health, but what they were saying, I was trying to understand what they felt, the optimal vision of what being mentally healthy meant to them. So we got back together in December, and we did what's called an appreciative inquiry stance, where I said, what does it look like, sound like, and feel like if you are feeling mentally healthy, emotionally and physically? And they unpacked it. They shared all, they shared a lot of information. And in the course of that, what we were able to do is really break down into these three focus areas, like we're really trying to get laser focused. Because just putting strategies in place without knowing why you're doing it is sometimes closing your eyes and, you know, throwing a dart at a dartboard and not knowing where you're looking. So we wanted to be as clear and concise as possible. So with all of their statements, we organized them, and these were the themes. They wanted positive interaction with peers in school. They wanted fun and welcoming environment, and they wanted peaceful, productive conversations. And I just want to share with you the anecdotal information that went with each of these. For positive interaction, everyone accepting of everyone, positive engagement between peers, manners, no threats. That was the voice of the students. The next one, fun and welcoming. They wanted laughter. They wanted classrooms and teachers that were excited to be there, positive language, being able to laugh at situations and themselves, and they wanted visual representation of all student groups. And then the last one, peaceful, productive conversations. They wanted constructive criticism, understanding and seeking to understand, students being able to express their opinions freely, and peaceful conversation among peers. So they wanted a structured environment where those conversations could be not only peaceful but productive and constructive. So at that point, we gave them some homework over winter break. And we gave them several evidence-based resources. So that, you know, I gave them Making Caring Common from Harvard. I gave them a lot of the toolkits that came out of PDE, looking at the supports and things that have been proven to be effective. One thing I want to say, when we're thinking about the desires of the group and what they're working toward, we're working with students, and the question we're always kind of asking ourselves at the table is whose voice is not at the table, and what can we guarantee all students have access to? That's our focus right now. We refer to that as Tier 1, but we want every student to be able to have access to that productive environment, fun and welcoming, and then peaceful, productive conversations. So we got back together, and we started to say, okay, so now here's where the rubber meets the road. What are we going to do? And first and foremost, they started to brainstorm things that were already happening. When you're looking at something like positive interaction with peers in school and fun and welcoming environments, we really felt like they went together. You can see that there are a lot of strategies already in place, but we had some time unpacking those, and I would ask questions like, is the Make Your Bed strategy that is introduced in English 9, is that carried through all schools, all classes? Is that reinforced through all grade levels? What does that look like? What's the expectation on the part of the teachers to support that? Or what's the expectation on the part of the students to follow that through? And those questions led us into some more conversation, but I'm now, I just realized I took your slide, so let me give it to you.
So one of the things, to just piggyback, we realized as a group and a team, and the students did a nice job really coming to this fruition, is we necessarily need to go out and, you know, we certainly can go out and look for other programs that are out there, but certainly there are a lot of things that are occurring already in the high school. They just aren't necessarily connected or codified across the board, grades 9 through 12, on a daily basis, on a yearly basis. So, you know, just like Make Your Bed, the book by Admiral McRaven, it's all about resilience. It's all about trying to find, you know, find out who you are. We have Team You, which is very inclusionary, and it continues to grow. We have a ton of clubs and organizations that meet 11th period, you name it, all kinds of groups. We have a video game group, so we have a Dungeons & Dragons group. We have a puzzle group. We have a book club. You know, if you need to find engagement, it's there. Those students that are interested, you know, we have a group that wants a ping-pong group, a club to meet, and we're open to that. So, you know, certainly lots of things. It's just a matter of us getting, you know, out there. Obviously, the emphasis that's been on sportsmanship for years in this district is a huge piece with that. You know, we have our expectations. We have, you know, curriculum already that is already approved. It's already in place. It really does take a look at, you know, different perspectives with the idea that, you know, falling under that idea of, you know, you have to respect that there are other opinions, that there are other viewpoints. You don't have to agree with them, but at least, you know, listen to them. We had Attorney General's Office come in and work with our staff on how to promote peaceful conversations, how to deal with it when somebody says something that's insensitive and inflammatory, how to deal with it on the spot. So we've done that. So really, one of the things that we came to the conclusion, students and staff in this, is when we have our March 24th in service, one of the things we're going to do as a faculty is sit down and figure faculty is sit down and figure out, how do we take this list that this group created and try to codify it so that it becomes really, you know, ingrained into the fabric of, of the learning environment from first day of school to the last day of school, from ninth grade, first day, to the day you graduate and you go, you know, step across stage.
Yeah, the one word I like to bring up here is fidelity. So a lot of these things are happening, but are they happening with fidelity across the board? So that's what March 24th is going to be about. How, how do we, what does fidelity look like? So that's what's already in place. But the students wanted to continue and, and offered some other suggestions, and this is really where we're at right now. They, they started to brainstorm. These are just some of the action steps, like we just got to this at the end of our meeting. They have a, a whole brainstorming list of strategies that they've put together that we now have to massage into an, an action plan. And so far, one of them is a tiered acknowledgement system, recognizing when students are positively interacting with peers, recognizing when those peaceful, productive conversations or reactions are happening. So those are some of the things that are in our next steps. We do want to distribute the survey. Sometimes when we write an action plan, we don't get a chance to implement it right away, and so you don't necessarily see a change in the data one year out. But with the work of the administrative team over the summer and all, a lot of the changes that have been made, and some of the initial data that Dr. Mullen has been collecting, we really feel that we want to see how things are going, so we would like to redistribute the survey in the spring to the, the stakeholders again, so that we can kind of keep tabs on what's been put in place, how is that having an impact? And then when we add this on, that'll be another opportunity next year for us to take a look at that impact. Next steps.
So we have been, we've taken all of the information, our principal's advisory group, we just went through all of this. This exact same presentation was presented to them in a little bit more condensed format, because we didn't have Tanya's expertise there, but we did go over that. We plan to share with the staff in February in an effort to kind of prompt and prep for what's coming in March. We, the committee will continue to meet on a regular basis to create the action plan and then to begin the steps for how do we implement. We talked about March 24th already. Survey is going to be distributed in the spring. Again, coupled with that, why do a survey? Let's see what's working, what's made an impact, and let's keep doing those things. And if something isn't making an impact, let's look at how we can tweak it and fix it, which is part of the HRS system, taking a look at data, making changes, you know, keeping things at work and making changes as we need to, with, we have that. And then, you know, one of the things that we'll do is we'll share this process to the other buildings with the hope that, you know, for them to start to take this on as well and go through this process, so that they too can take a look at their school climate.
And as part of the Safe Schools Grant, one of the requirements is to conduct a school climate survey. So that's one of the pieces that's already been completed, and we'll be monitoring that. So how does that inform anything that you're, you're looking at in terms of needs assessment and prioritization for comprehensive planning? And then last but not least, does this, should this, how should this be scaled up in other buildings? Because what you heard tonight was really a deep dive into just the high school. So those are some of the questions that we have on our docket to answer.
Questions from board members?
Okay, hearing gone. I'm sorry, guys.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Um...